Go ahead, Mr. Chairman, we're live.
The January 28th meeting at 7:31. Can we have the announcements, please?
Okay, January.
What's that? Yes, hold on, sorry. Give me a second.
I lost you.
Yeah, hold on, hold on, hold on. You're quicker than I'm fast, hold on. I lost my agenda. Hold two seconds, hold on. Okay. Number one. Call to order and statement of compliance, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting dates on the municipal bulletin board and website and by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel newspaper and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Number two, standard board procedures. Any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding, any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision and a quorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Number three, meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the planning board not to continue any matter past 10:30 PM at any regular or special meeting of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting to a later specified cutoff time. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Hello, where's my shit now?
Do you mind just repeating the date because I think I heard a different date?
I heard January.
Yes, I thought you said, that's what I heard.
Who said January?
Did you just restate the date of tonight's meeting?
Uh, yes, tonight is September 28th and I'm, why can I not share, get my screen off right now? Hold on a minute, everybody? Alright, um. Sorry, everybody bear with me, I don't understand why I'm not getting. Oh, I got it, I got it, okay. It switched my screens, okay, sorry about that, everybody. Okay, roll call.
I think Mr. Chairman is having a technical.
He's tech, yeah, so I will continue so far until such time that he rejoins us momentarily, um. We're all having technical problems tonight. Is there some solar flares going on we don't know about or something? Alright. Where's my roll call?
A meteor is hurling toward us as we speak, so.
Is it for real?
We better speed it up.
Alright.
Are we getting tonight?
Alright. Come on, please. Alright, Deputy Mayor Ray.
Present.
Committeeman Verlissa.
Present.
Ms. Dill.
Here.
Mr. Hands. Mr. Malinowski.
Yeah.
Mr. File.
You.
Mr. Richardson.
Present.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Present.
And Chairman Sando. Is having technical difficulties, looks like he's gonna reboot for a minute, so we'll give him a second to reboot.
Alright, do you want to just pause the meeting for now until he comes back and then when we convene?
I I mean, sure, we can.
Anyone opposed to that?
Alright, we're gonna put it on, we're gonna put it on pause for just a moment until our chair.
Just for the record, we're pausing as we wait for the chairman to come back online to his technical difficulties.
Yes, thank you.
Harry Seven.
Okay, then I'm gonna, the recording is back on, so let's let's do that, we have a quorum, I didn't state that yet, we have a quorum. So I would suggest, Mr. Vice Chairman, that, you know, we go through item number six.
Okay, thank you. It looks like Dennis is trying to come in through the attendees.
Is he? Oh, there he is, okay. Alright, Dennis, we have you in the, oh, there you are.
I, I'm having sound troubles. I dropped off and maybe I'm back, can anyone hear me?
We can.
I don't see me.
I can't, I can't hear you, Dennis.
I don't, I don't. I don't, I need to get my picture on here somewhere.
I can bet that your name is, would surprise.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm seeing a raised hand, which means I'm not an attendee, I'm a.
You've been demoted.
Okay, wait, hold on a minute.
There was a coup when you dropped off.
Okay.
Yeah, join as panelists.
Alright, hold on.
A cyber coup.
Now I gotta turn my video on. Can you hear me now?
I can see you, yes.
I, I am terribly sorry.
So close.
This wouldn't happen if we were in the courtroom. What did I miss?
Nothing.
Oh, did we do the roll call?
We did, say you're here.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum.
Thank you. We, the first item on the agenda is the application for Elite Properties on Valley Road. Application 2020 dash 07 Papa and the applicant has asked to be carried to our meeting on October 26th. We'll need to have a motion to carry them without further notice.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is meeting minutes and I've asked the Secretary of the Board to not send those out because there isn't enough time for us to read them all. She will send them out later in the week, so we'll have plenty of time to read them and digest them before our next meeting. Any questions? The next item is the RFP committees. For the first time, we have two RFP committees that have to work in parallel between now and the end of the year. Our engineer has come up for the normal three-year cycle of reviews and as you've all seen, he has asked not to be considered for renewal in 2022. So we will have to issue an RFP for engineering consultant and appoint an RFP committee. Since the planning board is already chairing the attorney RFP committee, the zoning board will provide a chair for the engineer RFP committee and we will need to provide two members for that joint committee. And I have asked Mr. Richardson and Mr. Malinowski to be those two. Either one of you want to back out? As far as the attorney committee, Mr. Richardson is also had volunteered for that and would like to withdraw from that committee. That committee now consists of Ms. Dill and Dr. Ray and I'll need one more volunteer to serve on that committee. And I see your hand, Mr. Jones, and I'm waiting for another hand to come up. And I don't see another hand coming.
Just, just to add, if somebody's dying to be on the engineering committee, I'll gladly serve on the attorney committee, so.
I'd rather have you on the engineering, rather have you on the engineering committee and Mr. Jones will replace you on the attorney committee.
Great.
So, Mr. Chairman, so just to, just to confirm, so for the RFP committee for the engineer, we only have two members?
That's correct, because Ed's gonna provide a chairman.
Okay, Mr. Richardson and Mr. Malinowski and for, now for the attorney, we have Ms. Dill, Deputy Mayor Ray and Vice Chairman Jones, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just as an extra note, for the attorney committee, we have I think I counted seven today so far proposals that we've received, so I will be.
They are due in before the end of the month.
Correct, they're due in tomorrow. So by the end of the week, I will be forwarding to all on the committee the the proposals and if you would like hard copies of same, please let me know and I can provide those as well.
Now, the intent is that the committee will screen the seven and reduce it to two or three at their discretion and then we will hold a joint meeting with the zoning board at some time in the near future and interview those finalists. And we will do the same for the engineering consultant. But that RFP will go out this week and they'll get a month to respond, so that'll happen later.
Correct.
The difficult, the difficulty or the opportunity for the board members is that we've now got to do two interviews, two interview meetings joint with the zoning board and this will be big meetings and they have to be scheduled on a night when we can get both boards together. My intention and what we have done in the past is we look for a board meeting that does not have an application either board, that does not have an application and then hold a joint meeting on that date, which will be an extra meeting for one of the boards.
It'll be an extra meeting for the zoning board, most, most definitely.
Because their schedule is so full?
Correct.
And we only have five meetings left this year after tonight.
That sounds scary. Yeah.
Does anybody want to offer any comments on the schedule or the sequence of events? Now.
I'll do it virtually, I don't know if I can get everybody all into one room. But also offer great flexibility when people are available.
You've got to, you've got to come closer to your mic, Tom.
Let's do it virtually because it creates, it offers greater flexibility for people to be available.
Now, I'm not sure what our agenda is going to look like because Parisi is probably several meetings away from coming back to us, probably not until November. And Elite says they're gonna be here a month from today but they're still waiting, like they have been waiting since May to hear from the DEP.
That's outside of our control.
Right, so we may we, as, as we discover that applicants are not ready, we will have to start calling for interview meetings and that'll mean getting the zoning board involved and getting their people involved and getting noted, proper notices posted for the joint meetings, et cetera, so Deborah will be busy trying to coordinate all that.
Yeah, I would say those, those two interviews are gonna be priority because they set up for 2020, 2022.
Correct.
The applications, they can be they can be deferred, there's a little more flexibility there.
Well, the applications can be deferred only if the applicant is willing to, to do that. Legally.
Do you want to consider a special meeting just to get them, get it out of the way and on a Thursday or something?
Absolutely, we can do that as well.
We can do that as well, but that means that both boards have to squeeze in an extra meeting.
However you want to, however you want to handle it, it's fine, just a suggestion, I, I don't mind.
Good suggestion, Mr. Hand, I think that's an excellent suggestion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question again on the, the goal and objectives of these subcommittees, so are we when you say to screen, are we to have any dialogue with the applicants? Is this just a paper screen? To make suggestions, remind me of the mechanics.
Whatever you think is appropriate to boil down the list to two or three finalists for interviews by the whole board. There, there are no ground rules, you make them up as you go.
Right, and, and if you, if you don't feel comfortable contacting a perspective, you know, somebody that's given a proposal, you can always send questions back to me and I can forward them back to the applicant, as it were, as well.
Clearly, time is of the essence because once we come boil down the list of finalists, we've got to get a joint meeting scheduled and we've got to get the finalists lined up for interviews all at the same time.
If we're talking about special meetings, I'd like to propose the date, the first date of our proposed special meeting, I would suggest Thursday, October 21st.
I do not want to schedule a special meeting until we decide that a regular meeting won't work.
Okay.
For example, because one board or the other will have to have an extra meeting that month, but if we have a special meeting, then both boards will have to have a special, an extra meeting that month.
Correct.
And there's no point in having the zoning board cancel a meeting on, on Tuesday, simply in order to have a special meeting on Thursday.
Well, the zoning board's not gonna be able to fit anything on their, on their Tuesday nights.
Or vice versa.
Right. Right now for October 12th, you have the Parisi application, I'm sorry, we don't, we don't have anything scheduled for the planning board on Tuesday, the 12th. However, I'm not, does that give the RFP committee, if I get everything out by the end of the week, does that give the RFP committee enough time to review and pick two to three candidates to interview as soon as the 12th?
Teresa?
Yeah, for the lawyers or the engineers, I mean, for the lawyers, I think that's fine, I, like, I assume once I see that at the end of this week, I'll have a little, how much notice do you have to give for that?
Notice for, I mean, I would put in, I would just, I would have to give notice this week to put in a notice, well, actually, 48 hours, I'm sorry. Forty-eight hours notice I have to give for a special.
Yeah, I imagine two weeks is fine, because I imagine we'll independently review them and then me and Mr. Jones and Brennan, you're on the committee, right, we'll just like probably talk once through it.
Sure, okay, so I can all, so then by the end of the week, when I send everybody the RFPs, I will also pull the zoning board first and foremost to see if the 12th will work and then I will set up a Zoom for all the committee members for the attorney of RFP to review the applications unless you would prefer to meet in person.
Right, yeah, I mean, I'd rather, at least, I'd rather do that than try to schedule a special meeting, especially if we don't have anything on the 12th right now.
Agreed.
Thanks.
But, that's very ambitious, but let's try for it.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we can't deal with the engineers until November because the RFP is just going out and they'll need a month to respond.
Correct, yeah, the, it'll be the month of October for the response for our, for engineer.
Well, Dennis, what makes you say it's ambitious, like, you know, if, if you've done this before and there's something in particular that you think is lengthy, what is that?
Objects at rest tend to remain at rest, objects in motion tend to remain in motions, Newton, one of Newton's laws.
We'll get it done.
It can be done, it can be done.
No, no, I just wanted to know if, if there's anything in particular that we should like.
No, just, just, just getting people together and reaching a consensus.
Yeah.
And I think, I think that keeping the meetings on Tuesday night, if we can, is apropos because these attorneys and then the engineers, after this interview process, that, you know, they're interviewing to have this position for Tuesday nights. So, so quite honestly, if the, assuming the committee is able to pick two to three candidates, if I called them the day before and said, hey, we need you on a Zoom tomorrow night, you know, on the 12th, they should be available.
Because we already told you to keep your Tuesday nights free.
Correct, correct.
Okay. I'll, I'll look for that at the end of the week, Deb.
Very good.
Is there any reason why you can't get those out? What you have, get them out right away?
Um, other than just what else is on my plate, sitting on my desk at the township offices?
Good enough.
Yeah, I, I have to get some zoning board stuff out tomorrow, I've got to do some zoning stuff, I can, I'm aiming for Thursday right now, that's my goal. To get everything out on Thursday, which is the first.
Alright, anything else on RFPs or we'll move on?
I have a quick question, Mr. Chairman, do we need any review of the engineering solicitation or is that pretty well set?
Deborah, you, you've got something that we used before. I'm assuming that all the potential candidates know what a board engineer does.
Correct.
And the, the gating issue is whether or not they can be available on Tuesday. And, and the job of the committee is to decide whether they have the depth to, to handle Long Hill Township.
To the RF commit, to the RFP committee, I will send out the engineering RFP committee, I will send out tomorrow, I will send out the actual ad that I planned, that we can place and if there's anything any changes or anything, I mean, I'm basically gonna use the same template we used previously. So, but if there's any changes that you'd like me to make, by all means, I, I would welcome those.
Great.
They'll send it tomorrow.
Thank you.
Any other questions about RFP? I would then like to move on to the master plan discussion. As you recall, back in June, I asked for volunteers to to take on various trouble spots in the RF, in the master plan, in the land use element and give us a proposal. For this go around, Mr. Hands was gracious enough to send us a document for Sterling. And tonight's discussion will focus on what is the end game for the downtown Sterling Main Avenue B15 zone? What do we want that to evolve into over the next 10 or 20 years? And I would rather, as I've said before, I would rather discuss that in advance and then write the element around the decision rather than putting an element in front of you and having it shot down, our, the history of master planning over the past 25 years has been that documents are prepared in committee and put in front of the planning board and then get sent back to committee because the planning board can't agree on some aspect of it and they never come back out. So we're gonna try to resolve each of the trouble spots in advance and then write the language of the, of the element after the decision is made. What is it that we want the B15 zone to look like 10 or 20 years from now? And David, since this was your proposal, I'm gonna let you start by telling us what that document that you sent tells us about the future of the B15 zone.
Just to clarify one point, this has not gone to the planning board before. Hasn't been discussed and hasn't been returned to committee. This is the work that was done in the committee. And if you've got any time, you, I mean, the first page or so, just some background. I don't know if anybody has any questions or comments about the background, but the focus element really is on the historical aspect of the, you know, the workers' village. So we have that plaque for it, so I just wondered to see if that was something that we could leverage. Bring it a bit more for a couple of purposes, one for just, you know, focal point in town. And again, in general, we tried to in general, each section of town has its own characteristics. So we just tried to, you know, suggest building upon those characteristics of Sterling and then utilizing some of these strategies to help alleviate some of the, should we say, zoning restrictions. Before getting into all that, does anybody have any comments or thoughts about the first page or two? On just the background as to what.
David, if you, if you would please go along with me, we're not gonna do wordsmithing on a page by page basis, we're going to try to visualize the end game for the development and then we'll do the wordsmithing at a later date after we understand what the target is.
Gotcha, I wasn't worth speaking on this, making sure everybody's read it and comfortable with the introduction, background.
Tom? Did you circulate this document?
We circulated it before the last meeting, which turned out to be only 10 minutes long because we had a couple of members missing. And we, we agreed to defer it, you, but you saw this prior to the last meeting.
Okay, I thought there might have been another bird, okay, thank you.
And, and this is essentially the work product of the 2020 Master Plan Committee and topology. Is that correct, David?
Yeah, and, and prior work as well, I mean, so evolution, but yes, this is the where we ended up. So, you know, we're just on the future vision stuff, so some of the things to think about, how to take advantage of the Sterling train station. Right, whether that's a hopefully a positive thing, and in general, the town has three train stations. Obviously Sterling's a little bit, you know, militant to a degree as well, that's so Gillette, those three train stations right central town, the village.
I would like to observe that as the Sterling plan has evolved since the Master Plan Committee was first formed in 2014, the Sterling train station was a major anchor. But yesterday, there were four cars and a bicycle parked in the parking lot, today there were five cars and no bicycle parked in the lot. Maybe the bicyclist knew it was gonna rain, I don't know. But the, the Sterling train station may not be any, a, a factor anymore in the development of the Sterling Business District.
Maybe, maybe not, it's unknown at this point, I would think. So Sterling train station, obviously, it's central into town. And then we talked about the, and this is, Dennis, this is village area, this isn't a board sterling beyond just the sort of, this section, I want a better word, from the train station up to Essex or somewhere, so it's just really that sort of central part of town or the village and then how can we potentially improve some of the well, specific focus opposite Stone Hotel, some of those sort of buildings there and the, the if you will, unutilized space. And then we also thought about the area at the end of Railroad Avenue to the east which is sort of a bit of a catchall of, of of equipment and usage, so whether there's an opportunity to do something different there. Built upon the, as I mentioned, the historic nature of the village or, you know, perceived historic nature of the village. I think that was sort of largely the key facts and so main things is, again, the opposite Sterling Hotel and going up to where the pizza was up to where the pizza restaurant is. Is there something we can do there to invoke a spirit of what Sterling could be? Maybe using the historic working village as a concept, obviously, concept, and I think in the diagram, in the document, put out a picture that Liz and her team put together a while back as a suggestion, just to really sort of bring it to a some suggestions of sort of the bulk view or of what could go up still Stone Hotel. We did that survey a couple of years ago, a bit longer now. We did that survey a couple of years ago, a bit longer now. Where people, you know, gave thoughts about what they would want to see downtown Sterling. You know, some people can, you know, suggestions along the lines of Baskin Ridge downtown, sort of picket fences, you know, setback. Um, frontage of, um, you know, basically, uh, stores and, and maybe apartments above. Wondered if a, a different view maybe make a bit of sense. So, so try and pull upon workers village of more of a, uh, slightly high density. And bring the, um, as they are today, really, the shop front to the, uh, to the curb side or, you know, to the sidewalk. So that, hopefully you've got that diagram as well in your deliberations. But it's really to do with looking at the field downtown Sterling. How to utilize, if anything, with a train station, how to think about down Railroad Avenue. There's some, you know, there's some odds and ends with unusual stuff. I'm not going to necessarily go through those. Then we also talked about, look, um, how to maybe, um, improve the streetscape as well, a different looking feel perhaps. Considering if there's any, probably not a lot of mediation can be done for, for flooding within that. But nonetheless, maybe there's some opportunities there to put some, uh, more greenery. You know, want to write better words, the bioswells as we used to call it. Um, and just sort of, you know, continue to make, get a, a walkable part of town. Um, not with, um, just a chain stores, you know, keep that small scale shops. So I think we'll probably enjoy, I mean, obviously we've got a few examples down there today. So how can we encourage that type of, uh, you know, small, small scale shopping? And maybe, you know, start thinking about, you've got Stone Hotel, you've got the dessert ladies, you've got the pizza, you've got, um, the gluten free. So we've certainly got, um, Biagios, of course. So there's, there's a, a certain infrastructure or setting of, um, you know, dining, casual eating and et cetera. So is that, is that where we leverage in town? Build upon that as sort of focal point of Sterling as well. Obviously, you know, in comparison to maybe Gillette or less so perhaps Millington, obviously Myersville's picking up a, you know, built out a new, uh, restaurant. So and not really too much in terms of altering the, the, sort of the human landscape there either. So it's a very much a grid. Part of town is, you know, streets are fairly straight. More like a sort of a New York block, um, then keeping in feel, I guess, with the, the workers village. So it's less of a Gillette type of, um, less sort of rural, if, or if you will. More focal points of, uh, back in the day, a, to the degree of, uh, living and working. So if we can build upon that, make this, you know, make it a, uh, an area of part of town, people will come and, ideas, we always say, stop and stay.
At this point, you have anything else, David, or can we move?
No, it's, it's absolutely, I just got there, I came to the end.
At this point, I would like to ask our planner for her advice on how we deal with this neighborhood.
Okay. Do, do you want to take the questions from the, um, board members first?
No, let's, let's hear your, I'd like to hear your statement on how you think we should proceed with a master plan for this neighborhood.
All right. So I, I went through, I went through the draft. I, I went through and looked at the district, um, you know, both on the ground. And then have been looking at tax records and tax lots and so forth. And, um, you know, the first thing I was going to say about the whole Sterling area, which is to sort of break it into, to sections. Which you've already done and our discussion tonight is already done because there, it's a strange mix of land uses. All in one very close proximity to one another, right? You have multifamily across from industrial, across single family next to ground floor retail with apartments. So, you know, when I was trying to get a handle on it, I had to break it into sections. And I, I think that it's appropriate to think, as we're doing tonight, I think that Main Avenue corridor, I think between the railroad and Essex, but perhaps it goes a little bit north of the railroad. Um, and then as David said, um, you know, you want to establish the characteristics of the area. And one thing that we typically do, and I would be happy to do it tonight, I didn't tell you this Dennis. This may be coming out of left field, but, um, one thing that we do a lot in our firm is SWAT analyses. When it comes to master plans, especially at, at, uh, you know, at the outs, it's not, this isn't the outset, but on something like this. It's a very finite area, um, and by SWAT, uh, you know, it's, it's whatever corporate speak or I don't even know. But, uh, you know, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats. And in some ways that helps organize, um, what it is that people think is good about this area? What are things that people actually don't like about this area? What are some opportunities? And then what are, I mean, threats is kind of a menacing word, but, um, you know, what are the challenges and what are the concerns? I think that a lot of them are in this draft, but I think it would be good to understand. Like, as I was going through the draft, I was sort of wondering, is that a strength or is that a weakness? And the, and the reason, you know, for example, I was looking at the small lot sizes. Well, it is interesting and it, it's very, in some ways can be almost considered quaint along Main Avenue. You have these very narrow lots with the buildings very, you know, somewhat close to the, to the street and they're low scale and that sort of thing. But then at the same time, is that a weakness? Because there is a limit within that, um, you know, footprint that you can, you can build and, and that sort of thing. And so one of the things, I mean, I could do is to go through. I kind of tried to take stuff from the draft and put it into sort of a SWAT or I could actually do a SWAT with the committee. But I would, that would help me anyway to understand and hopefully you all to understand, well, what is it that you like about the area? You know, and what is it that your wish was different about the area? And, um, because I wasn't totally clear, you know, on the one hand, it's, it's very historic. And, um, and the street pattern is historic and the scale is certainly very historic. But at the same time, there was, um, i- issues raised in the draft about adding more residents to get a criti- more critical, you know, mass of people to frequent the retail and the restaurants and that sort of thing. And I would have to say, I think if you wanted to get that, then you're going to have to sacrifice some of the smaller lot sizes, some of the smaller scale buildings. Or, or there will be trade offs, I would think. Um, I think it would be helpful for me anyway to understand what it is that people like. What is it people think are weaknesses? What are some opportunities? What are some threats? And I, as I said, there is a lot laid out in this draft. Help, I think, boil down what is, what is it that people want for this area? And I'm, I'm not sure that everyone's going to agree, but I think that once you kind of break it down into real characteristics and really like drone in, or, um, that might be helpful. And I think once you have an idea of what it is you want, then, and that gives you some goals and objectives. Then you can get the recommendations that will implement those goals and objectives. And so I think, um, there's a lot in this draft, but I, I think it could be organized in a certain way that would be maybe clear. And the vision might be clear so that the recommendations follow those vision and objectives.
You said, you said vision.
Yeah, okay. So I, vision, I actually, I don't like the word.
Well, no, I, I, that's a good word because that's essentially why we are here discussing this tonight. What is a vision that we can agree on for where we want Sterling to be? Now, when we talked about Valley Road a month ago, there was a very strong feeling that we really can't, we really can't control what happens on Valley Road, that economics will dictate as time goes by. And as developers come in and want to do certain things, we're going to have to go with the flow on that. Um, and, and I, and that, that is a, a notch down from where I thought we should be on the Valley Road evolution, the Valley Road vision. But I think it's pragmatic. And I believe that at this point, with regard to Sterling, we have to be equally pragmatic. Can we actually dictate a coherent, consistent future for Sterling? Or will we just wind up going with the flow? Because there is no practical economic, uh, or demographic alternative. Now, at a, at a meeting earlier this year, I asked the one member of this board who lives in the neighborhood, how often do you walk downtown from your house? And the answer was?
Well, I don't, I, I walk a bit.
Do you actually?
What did I say then?
Have you ever actually walked to the tailor shop or one of the salons?
I don't know. I, I walked to a strong hotel. I don't know what the tailor shop is.
You don't know where the tailor shop is? It's halfway between you and the Sterling Hotel.
That, that thing has changed so many times. It used to be like a psychic's office or whatever, but, um, yeah, no, like I'll walk a fair amount.
I want to be on yours.
Biagios.
Yeah.
Well, I live.
Okay, so we have one vote for a little bit of walkability towards the Sterling Hotel.
Oh, I think Sterling, I, and, and David knows this, we've talked about it, that like, I think, um, embracing like a walk, especially since we talked about how Valley Road can't really be a walkable area. Um, that like embracing a walkable neighborhood on Main Avenue in Sterling is great.
Now, it may be a walkable neighborhood, but is it a walkable commercial district?
Trying to create, is that what we're trying to, you know, you know, is, is, isn't that one of the purposes of, of, of planning?
Yes, yes.
How do we create that? I, I think that's what, when David went through the, the, the write-up. If you look at, if you look at some of the recommendations, that's exactly what we're trying to do. It's exactly what we wrote.
Now, if you, if you consider the fact that there are two empty buildings across the street from the hotel. And there is an application coming to the zoning board to combine those two lots and build a, about a 15 unit, uh, multifamily housing development across from the Sterling Hotel. That's an interesting proposal because what it does is it takes two commercial lots off the street and replaces it with 15 residential units, only a block from the train station. If, if we do too many of those, there won't be any lots left for commercial.
Sure there will. They'll just be further down the street.
We go mixed use there?
And you can, and you can encourage that. If you look at number 13, you look at number 11, creating centers for lot consolidation.
Yes, but how do we do that?
But first you need the people.
Let me, let me, let me offer some numbers. The two lots across the street from the Sterling Hotel are assessed at $600,000 and they comprise six tenths of an acre combined. That works out to a million dollars an acre mathematically to buy up two derelicts and start construction. Uh, my question that, that we needs to seriously consider, I think, is can a developer afford to spend a million dollars an acre for essentially vacant land after he tears down the existing properties? Is that a viable economic path?
Well, the answer is you got an application for 15 units.
Yes, but that takes two commercial properties off the street. That, that leaves only 13 commercial properties, less than half the total number of properties on the, in that three block area.
Hey, could we consider a mixed use there?
Yes.
Commercial on the bottom and the residential on the top?
That's not the application in front of the zoning board.
Can, can we recommend that?
Yeah.
So let me just, can I just add on a bit, just to continue your thought there? The, the idea here was, Liz, please add in in a second. The master plan, forget about, I don't care about tomorrow, right? The vision is to say, we would like to think about exactly what you're saying, Victor. Some commercial on the bottom, that's what the picture is for, commercial on the bottom, apartments on top, higher density. Put that out there as a vision to lease either two things. One, encourage perhaps people to develop to come and think, oh, I've got an idea. Oh, good. That's helping me directionally what I can do as opposed to maybe, um, all residential. And two, you're going to, you know, forget about all the ordinances and stuff, if we want to try and make it a little bit more formal. But three, it, it's also, I think, an opportunity perhaps for the township committee and others to think about. How do, if we want to encourage that and we accept the commercials issues, but we think it's a good thing to do. Are there avenues for redevelopment zones or any other ways that the township can encourage specific development? So some of it is just put it out there and let some developers think, oh, that's great. I'm not going to get much help from the town other than the ordinances and stuff, but there may be other ways that the town can, can, can really, if we really want to do something and make a change. But Liz, sorry.
No, no, it, uh, one potential, I, I guess, here's my bottom, like overall question. Is this something like, let's say somebody bought everything between, I'm going to get these streets wrong. Let's say everything between Union and Somerset. They just bought those lots and put one big building. Is that something you want to see? And, and, and I guess that that's, that's the kind of where I'm struggling a little bit with understanding what it is that you want, or, you know, what, what is the ultimate goal, I guess, you know? Cause I would think you wouldn't want that.
I don't know. Is that true? I mean?
I don't know. I don't know.
I'm gonna look at the map again, but we, we're certainly, whereas we sat down a couple of different times, the committee, sat down, looked across the street, maybe not on the east side, but certainly the west side, dilapidated buildings or underutilized, you could argue. You're not going to, what are you going to put up there? Open space, tremendous, right? Batteries, maybe not. Office buildings, probably un, un, not necessary. Quaint little, you know, residential sort of, um, Baskin Ridge type downtown. It's fantastic, but may not be, uh, commercial. But the workers village sort of gives, invokes, I use word invokes as opposed to shows in existence today. But invokes the idea of something a little bit more industrial, a little bit more, you know, get those commercial, get a number of little shops at the bottom. Get apartments above and use and see if that becomes something that makes sense to everybody. It's just, it's, obviously, just one or two, you know, just thoughts. But I, I think that gives a clearer vision or a vision as to what could be done. And yes, it does mean a high density component of the village. But is that bad or wrong for that specific area of the village?
You, you know, if there's, if there's one thing I could interject here, and actually it was a thought that was brought by, uh, Mr. Rentois. I mean, all this stuff is well and good, the, uh, you know, discussing, discussing what it could be. But there's a, that, that, you know, there is something that we, that we, I think we need to, we need to consider. And that is the flooding that happens in that area. And it's liable to stymie any, any wonderful dreams that we can conjure up, right? About, about how good it could be. Cause e- everything sounds great, but you know, we, we have to, we have to think about how, uh, how all, all these can coexist with, uh, you know, the intermittent flooding.
Intermittent, he said, after canceling the street fair.
There's, there's no way anyone's going to bring any commercial in there with a flooding situation until we get that resolved. I mean, we have a police station that can't even be used because it's flooded or gets flooded. Can't even get to it unless you got a kayak. So, um, that needs to be addressed before you can start thinking about how we're going to bring, uh, more businesses, more walkability into the, uh, Sterling, uh, downtown area.
Yeah, and, and just, this is a comment, if, if you remember a couple of, three years back, we had the application come for Great Park. Where somebody said, I would like to put in, I think there's 80 units in that same area. And then we just questioned, where are you going to put parking? Well, it goes underneath and he said, maybe not a good idea because of the flooding. And as you're going to, as a threat, that's absolutely number one threat of Sterling.
Yeah.
And so maybe, I mean, you know, maybe, um, as a threshold issue for the, for the, uh, master plan to tackle is, uh, what flood mitigation, uh, uh, measures might we, might we want to see in the town? Um, to, you know, to make some of these visions, um, become, you know, potentially a reality.
Yeah, I just want to actually interject, the state actually changed the municipal land use law in the last six months. That in the land use element, which is sort of the one and the housing element, there are the two required elements. That in the land use element, which is sort of the one and the housing element, there are the two required elements. You have to address, um, hazard mitigation or whatever. I, I, it's like hazard assessment or hazard. Mobility assessment or something like that. And that is now a requirement in every land use element. Uh, especially just because of. Events that we've been experiencing over the last few weeks. Um, to understand, you know, to, to take that into an assessment when a town is planning its zoning.
So that's part of your SWOT analysis then, right?
In, you know that the, um, the pizza joint. Uh, on the west side. Uh, they moved out because the landlord raised the rent. And then he modified that building and raised the floor level about four steps above the sidewalk. The interior, internal floor level. And then a new pizza place moved in. And I understand an even newer place has replaced him because he couldn't get the business to, to stay in business.
Yeah, I just got a flyer. I just got a flyer in the mail.
You just got a flyer and it's, it's a, it looks to be a full service. I mean, it's a big menu. I don't know whether he will survive or not, but the. The, the reason that his predecessor, the military guy who offered a ten percent discount to veterans. He didn't survive possibly because the cost of modifying that building to raise the floor caused the rent to go up. And that changed the economics of his business. And if all the buildings in that stretch around the Union Street have to go through the same process. The question is. I- i- is there an economic viability for businesses there? We can't build residences there because we know the DEP doesn't allow first-floor residences in, uh, water zone. So what do we put there?
One, one, no, even after last flooding, south of the, north of the, um, by the pizza place, by the. Um, that wasn't really flooded that much.
Yeah, the bit, that, that intersection was totally flooded, uh, on Friday morning. Because that's the, that's the central core of the street fair. And that was, uh, that was, that could, intersection and half a block in every direction was flooded.
Not really.
The, uh, the gluten bakery was again underwater.
South side was, by the, by the bike shop, obviously, but it's less so down there.
No, I'm talking about up at Union Street. Up at Union Street was also flooded as well as the bike shop.
Yeah, but it wasn't, there was just running water across the street. It wasn't really that flooded.
No, it wasn't down there.
I, I wouldn't drive through it, quite frankly. I mean, I was there at seven o'clock on Friday morning and I would not drive through that water.
I chose to about eleven. It didn't, it didn't really go up like it did down at Maine and, and Valley.
We, 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 we need to address the stormwater issue. Because it, it, there's a domino effect, right? We had a police station that's not visible like that. There's also a plastic area that gets flooded as well. You take care of the stormwater, those two pieces become now no longer a problem.
What would you suggest we put in the master plan to address the flooding issue? I mean, you're, you're at the core of it. Tom, how do we? What, what is our vision?
You don't have to tell the township what to do. You tell them it's a problem and try to, and tell them to fix it. It's a recommendation to fix it. You don't have to tell them what to do.
Well, we, we went through that.
We're not the town engineers.
We did go through it ten years ago and it was a, a great pain for everyone. And I'm not sure, I just don't know if the township committee is willing to, to go through that pain again.
Well, if you, if you phrase it, if you phrase it that, that. The flooding situation. Is a hindrance to, to the, what we consider the necessary development to improve Sterling. And you say that's a recommendation that has, that should be addressed by the governing body. If you want, if you, if you want the, the, the Sterling area long-term to improve. And that's about all you need to say.
And if yes, and if no?
One thing that I would maybe think about is, um. You know, you could potentially put in some overlay zoning. And that would be, let's say, you, that would incentivize lot consolidation. Let's say you do an overlay where the minimum lot size is. Three acres. I, I, I'm just making a number up, but you know, so somebody would have to assemble lots. But the other thing you could potentially do is as part of that overlay is that, you know. They ha, it could be a conditional use or it can be some, something like that, that they have to incorporate certain stormwater. Management regulations. So you kind of put it on the private sector a little bit to, um, you know, that they get an economic. Benefit. They could probably develop. More than they would under the, under the conventional zoning, but they're also providing the flood mitigation at. Hopefully no cost to the, to the municipality. I mean, that, I think that, that might be one avenue.
I, I think Liz, that, that's an interesting, uh. Then, but there's, but it don't, it. I kind of think it just kind of puts the problem or in an isolated area without addressing the greater problem. Where we do have the flooding coming in, it's affecting residents, it's affecting businesses, it's affecting municipality and, and the way we're doing, uh. Business. I almost want to go back to, uh, the governing body and say. We need to revisit this. I know there were some pains from ten years ago. We don't want to push the burden onto other communities that are our neighbors or anything like that, but we need to look at this and maybe. Look at this jointly with our other community, our neighboring communities to figure out what is the best way to address this. We don't want to push the issue onto other people. We want to address it and address it in a way that promotes growth for the community. Stability for our residents and, and, and addresses the problem that just keep, it keeps showing itself. Because I tell you, it's very ugly, walk, looking around, seeing people, all their personal belongings up by the curb. So Brendan, over to you.
Can, can I just interject with a couple of comments? You know, Liz, I appreciate what you're saying because I think. One of the challenges we're finding on the engineering side is how to design for these storms. These storms are changing our statistical models that we use. As the basis for, you know, safely designing infrastructure for these communities. And this is a huge issue. It's, it's trying to be addressed on a national basis, but quite frankly. Hard choices are going to need to be made, uh, with regards to what you really can feasibly protect. Whether it's a small community like ours or New Orleans. So, you know, I think where we need to go, I think a couple of things. I agree that we need to, uh. Better. Not put, you know, baby in the corner, as they say, uh, in Dirty Dancing is let's put. The stormwater issues more front and center. In our planning and not kind of, you know, relegate it to, uh, you know, a stormwater element. Type feature and, and I agree, uh, with Mr. Jones is that this needs to be done on a watershed scale. Uh, we're at the headwaters of the Passaic, but we're part of a system that goes all the way down to Newark. And, and, um, if you looked at the flooding in Wayne and what they've been dealing with over the years where the river really flattens out. It's just horrific. The other thing that I'll just mention is I think the buyback and the programs to take on and, and increase our storage capacity. Is probably the best thing that we can continue to do. Is try desperately to again, get, continue to get more dwellings, uh, and businesses out of harms way. By not allowing people to build in, in floodplain or floodplum-prone areas. Now, I know those flood-prone areas tend, are increasing. Uh, but I think we need to be careful that we're not necessarily designing for these catastrophic, you know, catastrophic events. Other, because that's going to be cost prohibitive and really deter development as well. So. You know, I, I think, you know, the, bringing the stormwater more as a thought process throughout each of. Our main elements, including of course, the land use element is going to be critical instead of. Again, it's, I, I think it's written as an appendage to the conservation element that I worked on. So it's, it's, it's actually a sub-element to an element. It's not even required.
Here, here.
Now, there was a, there was a suggestion that perhaps we should, uh. Uh, ask developers to handle flood mitigation at no expense of the taxpayers. But I ask you this. Given the choice of buying property on Main Avenue and building a mixed-use shopping building. With residences overhead. And including flood mitigation as part of their cost. Versus doing the same thing in downtown Gillette on higher ground where you don't have to deal with flood mitigation. If you were a developer, which would you choose?
Which evidence allows me to, I don't think it's in Gillette.
You're, you're not going to, that, that's going to be, you're, you're not going to be able to straddle the developers with all this. This is a much bigger issue. I mean, the dev, I agree that we should focus the developers on best management practices in regards to controlling their stormwater runoff. And things of that sort, but we're not talking about concerns with your rain garden working when you've got three feet of water. On your property.
Yeah.
So, so can I play a little devil's advocate? What if we thought about, um, instead of trying to insensitize and bringing more business to the Sterling area? Why not turn it to more residential?
Does that matter, Tom? Does that matter? Do you think which type of development it is, is to still have the same issues, really? I mean, it's.
Yeah, it still has the same issues, but I, I'm just, I'm just trying to think the other way around, just to see what that would look like if we tried to play that route. Where we're trying to, uh, instead of putting more businesses there, uh, turn it more into residential area. There's going to be some businesses that will stay, but then others may go to, uh, Valley Mall where we have vacancy all over the place. We have vacant stores. Just trying to think that way. Rumbling.
Tom, I.
Teresa, you've got your hand up.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, but no, Victor's had his hand, has, has been trying to say something for a while, I think. I'll go after Victor.
Oh, thank you, Teresa. Uh, real quick, um. Just a quick question. Well, I actually have a few, but first, can we write in? Uh, to the master plan, a flood, uh, you know, stormwater mediation system for that area? Can we, you know, can we write that in as part of the master plan? It doesn't make sense to do so?
Yes.
Yes, we could write it in. Does it make sense? Uh, we'd have to know a whole lot more about hydrology than, than we do.
I only say that because I, I agree that I don't think that. You know, potential business owners or developers are going to do too much. If they have to, you know, if they have to make, you know, bear the burden of that expense themselves. So I think that we need to provide, you know, uh, as a desirable, um. You know, an, uh, uh, an atmosphere over there as we can. Now, having said that. You know, moving past it, let's say that. You know, we, 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 we develop some type of wastewater plan that works, because I think eventually the town is going to have to do so. And once we do that, I think that a walkable, uh, quaint area with small shops. And, 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 and nice residential would be perfect for, um, you know, the downtown area in Sterling. Nice streetlights that go from the train station to Valley Road. Uh, you know, nice sidewalks with nice planters hanging off the, the light posts and flower boxes, uh, you know. Uh, cast iron benches and garbage cans that match all the way through, um. I believe that if we had a parking problem, I think there's like a double lot that the town owns for open space. I don't know if we can convert it to a municipal lot on one of the lower streets, uh, close to Main Avenue. It's either on, it's on Mercer or, or, you know, the. It's either, it's, it's on the first or second street coming up from Valley Road. So I think we can promote, uh, you know, some parking if we needed to. If the on-street parking wasn't enough. And I was also wondering. If to promote, to promote people to walk to that area, is there any way that we could think about maybe some nice lamp posts? And maybe a sidewalk on one, on one side of the street. For the streets, the side streets from Dorsey's all the way down to, uh, you know, Valley Road. So that those areas, you know, people who live in those, those neighborhoods would be able to walk. To this, you know, to this business district. Because as of right now, if you live on a lot of those streets, there's no sidewalk, there's no lights to get there.
That was point number twelve in, in, in the write-up. Extend the streetscaping features, lighting benches, et cetera, to Valley Road.
And the side streets, and the side streets over there, Mercer and. Uh, and the, and, and, and the rest of them over there, so that the people who live in those neighborhoods would have at least a sidewalk on one side of the street. With nice lighting so that they could walk there. I know a lot of, you know, Chatham and Madison and, 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 you know, Westfield, they have that type of thing.
But you put, you start putting, you start putting a lot of lighting and a lot of sidewalks on, uh, in, in, in residential areas. Off a main street, you might run into a lot of, a lot of, you know, public discontent about that.
I'm talking about, you know, not, not bright shining lights, lights that shine down to the sidewalk. Uh, I mean, if you guys think about it, I think i- i- if you imagine having all those street. Connect to, uh, you know, connect to, to Main Avenue and the train station, wouldn't that promote a vibrant? Downtown, you know, business district that the community enjoys and brings us together? I don't know if it's possible, but sounds nice to me.
Well, you, you're right, Victor. You don't know if it's possible, and I don't know if it's possible. But the question is not so much whether or not we have sidewalks and lighting. The question is, what do you have at the core in the business district that's going to bring people, want? People to want to walk there. And that's, that's our fundamental issue today is can we? Envision a future that makes that area a, a place where people want to walk to. Now, admittedly, there's the hotel and, and Beagios. Uh, and, and they are targets, and as long as those two enterprises remain in business, they will bring traffic in. The problem is, they bring traffic in in the evening and all the storefronts and salons and the tailor shop and the dentist are closed in the evenings. So there's not a synergy there.
Then it's, I think you're focusing the wrong area. The idea is to. Not be so negative about it. And just say, no, if that's a good thing to do and Victor seems to like, you know, is that not something, so, uh, yeah, Teresa, sorry. And then, um, then we just encourage it, right? And all being well, hopefully.
Well, that's what we have said since the last master plan twenty-five years ago. But what's, what's the new construction in the past twenty-five years? What's, what has? How has the old master plan, uh, been, uh, implemented?
Because it wasn't written in a way to encourage and provide that type of vision.
You know, I, I also have another question, though. I, I, I do appreciate I've gotten a lot of time here. But the area on, on Main Avenue, which turns highly residential. What is that zoned? Is that zoned mixed-use commercial or is it zoned only residential?
That zone is a, is zoned B one five, uh, five hundred thousand square foot lot size. Which is the smallest lot size in town. And it is zoned for, uh. Business with residents allowed on the second floor. But the restriction is five units per acre. So if you've got a fi, you, in order to get one residence overhead. You would have to have at least a fifth of an acre, which is about eight thousand square feet. So if you've got a five thousand square foot lot, you can't even put one apartment on the second floor. So now you're talking about consolidating two lots to give you a ten thousand foot lot. And, and that would allow you one apartment overhead. And those are the numbers.
So how would we? I'm sorry.
In the entire. In the entire zone, in the entire B one five zone, three blocks, both sides of the street is only eight acres. And so in, in three blocks, both sides of the street. If you maximally exploited residents on the second floor, you could put forty apartments in there. Now, right now, there's probably on the order of twelve to fifteen apartments on second floors in that neighborhood. If you could get every one of the lots redeveloped with, uh, uh, residents over business. But, but that is our target question today. Can we get the entire, uh, uh, three-block area? Redeveloped to some maximal, maximally efficient vision?
Well, I'm on the bottom where it's a lot, a lot of it is residential. I was just wondering how we could possibly attract doctors' offices, lawyers' offices, accounting offices, maybe a nice antique shop, something like that.
That that is not in the B15, according to the zoning methods on the website below.
Yeah, you've got you've got to stop at Essex Street, Victor.
Yeah, yeah.
Essex to Valley, it's R4.
It's R4. It's in it's a single-family residential zone.
Would it would it make sense to to rezone it mixed-use commercial?
Well, that would mean tearing down a very nice residential neighborhood to put in commercial when we've got vacant commercial all over town.
No, no. In other words, what I meant is is what if what if one of those buildings would be great for a law office or an accountant's office?
Well, you've seen that. You've seen the 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 March Law Office go in on between Union and Essex. A residence converted and very nicely repurposed as a law office. But I don't see that and and that doesn't violate the zoning. It was a fairly inexpensive law office because the house was already there and she just redid the interior to make a law office out of it. And and that's very nice, but that's one in 25 years.
Right, but maybe again, how could we encourage it? Maybe encourage a bed and breakfast, you know, that type of stuff there where it's more residential looking down there.
Uh, yes, but that I believe that's a I believe that's an issue beyond what we're trying to resolve today, Victor, which is the the existing commercial district north of Essex.
But it could be. It would be there would be a possibility of of putting an overlay right along Main from Essex down to 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 Mercer to to encourage something other than simply single-family residence to include.
We could we could we could do that, and that's that's another issue.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying it's I'm not saying we couldn't do that, although parking would become a a significant matter there. Uh, but but right now, let's focus on the existing business district, which is, after all, got a bunch of vacancies and and is only 50% of that area is is commercial property. Half that area is existing residences.
Five element.
If you're going to encourage converting residences into law offices, we've already got more than 10 in the three-block area. Through more than 10 existing single-family residences in that in that three-block area. That's probably the place where you'd want to concentrate the effort if that effort is worth doing. But the question here is, do you want a? Do you want 10 residences converted into law offices, for example? Or would you rather have commercial buildings on those lots? That's a vision question. And going back to to Tom's gating issue flooding.
Teresa, did you have something to say as well?
Uh, yeah, it was kind of back to when we were discussing the stormwater management. And I don't know if this is like Dawn. I feel like you're the resident genius with this kind of stuff, but I could be like thinking about it incorrectly as a solution, but can you require any future development to be like you were saying, the pizza place, he raised that however many feet? Can you require any future development and building to be raised a certain amount? And then does that like remedy any sort of flooding issue or is that not even something that that you know how after Sandy down the shore, any house that had was built had to be put on pilings? Like, is that something that could be done here that is is of help or is that like not even the same issue?
First of all, you you've you're way off base calling me any kind of a genius. But no, I.
In the world of the blind, the one-eyed man. In the world of the blind, the one-eyed man is king.
Yes. You you can engineer anything. It's the cost and the feasibility of it. I mean, again, I I raised New Orleans as the extreme example. They spent billions of dollars putting in pumping systems, which largely worked in these last hurricanes that came up through. It was a lot of engineers were very nervous if the levees were going to hold. But in in this situation, though, Teresa, to require someone to raise the grade unfortunately is a really a temporal impact because you might keep your property dry. But if you can't get access to your property and the entire area is flooded, the water is going to go somewhere. So you're literally talking about raising the grade up to displace the water and not make it a flood hazard anymore. And it that's just not really practical. You can do it on an individual property basis, but you still run the risk and many communities get very upset when actually that happens because you're just displacing the water around to other areas that then used to not be flood flood prone.
Okay.
In that situation. And, you know, the shore is a great example, but again, back to the aesthetics, would would you want to walk down Sterling and see, you know, your properties on stilts? I mean, you could certainly do that.
Yeah, right. Not not like stilts, but like what like what did what did not Marcello's, whatever it is now, what did he do to his property? You don't have to get into it, but I'm just kind of using that as an example of what was mentioned before. But, um, yeah, I mean, I kind of agree that, like, any developers, if they do their research, is going to find that that area floods quite a bit and is going to like be hesitant to do something. So I think that is you know, at the forefront of any issue. And I don't know what the perfect solution is because.
And I and I think we're losing a battle against nature and the trends with our climate. Whether you want to argue whether it's induced by man or not, it that's not even the argument anymore. It's we're going to lose this battle. So why not begin to embrace and look to figure out, identify map and 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 steer these areas in a different direction? Um, because it's just you you're you're going to continue to be disappointed. I can almost guarantee it as we go into the future.
And I would agree. Just one quick point. Paul is they did actually raise it a couple, three feet or whatever, and it puts water weight, so water could flow underneath the building where they built it. But actually, for that, that's an individual um, situation. Not in this town is is not we we can try and do one building at the top, but really the bigger question is where Tom's going and everybody else, I think. The town has to do something more whole-scale to address this. This is not an individual lot-by-lot situation. This is something the whole town suffers for in one way or the other. Because I'm sure everybody had issues getting backwards and forwards going across the road. And I actually had to go, everybody got on stories. I still go to the office down Playfield and I just gave up and gone 287 because it was just jammed. Right? So everyone's another stories. So it's bigger. And I think that's where you're saying, Don, it's not just a I think we'll go we'll start say this is a township and a larger township issue. But what can we do at least in a township level? Because it's not just downtown, the Sterling villages, Valley Road as well in particular, and obviously Moorestown though.
Yeah, I I I liken it, you know, we the 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 name changes was significant to turn away from the river that kept, you know, biting us in the you-know-what to the hill that we all wanted to be on, so we weren't in the flood. You know, so.
Does anyone have any anecdotal evidence of whether there was flooding or not in the early days of Sterling? Did people drive their horse and buggy to market through floodwaters on Main Avenue?
But that's yesterday. Today is what we.
Can I just make a couple of comments about the 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 write-up here just real quickly?
No.
As I read through it.
If if it has to do with the business district, yes.
Yeah.
But the write-up in general is much more expansive than that, and I'd like to stay away from the write-up until we understand what the vision is.
Right. And and I'm I'm not wordsmithing. I'm on a macro level. I I think, first of all, I I I just wanted to reinforce that I think the the historic connection is great and I really like that part of it. And I think that in in the one cautionary note is where we go with the historic designations and could that be, again, a potential deterrent or a hindrance? As we look at that, I'm not a shippo expert. I've just heard of a lot of people talking about the challenges of trying to manage and maintain those designations. And I just it's just let's make sure we're going into that eyes wide open as a goal for that business district. I think it's wonderful to embrace history. I I love it. I love the old photos that I've seen and it it's really a cool story that you can really make it into for a destination. It's too bad some of these old factory buildings burned down. Because that would, I think, embrace it even more in regards to this this downtown area. And then my only other broad comment is when we talk about walkable, I think we should also include bikeable. This is a huge biking community. And just because we're not on two legs, we may be on two wheels. And I I think that we should continue to embrace that. When I see the number of bicyclists, cyclists in and around this area, this is a real crossroads, and I think we can continue to embrace that as a town. So those are my two my two big thoughts.
Well, we have we have incentives in the uh, Valley Road Master Plan element from about five or six years ago for putting in bicycle amenities. And interestingly enough, nobody on Valley Road's got bicycle racks except the town library. Nobody has nobody has embraced bike racks as a as an amenity that they want to put in.
I think we could do definitely more with our road lining even. I think you've got plenty of shoulder and other things, but it's, I think, between traffic calming and lining, you could certainly encourage more of that in a safe way. That's that whole smart street that we heard some really interesting talks on, right, David?
Yeah.
Liz, didn't they do some of that down in the Hudson County communities?
Well, are you talking about complete streets? Um, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Complete street.
Yeah, they did that. Well, they did it in Melbourne. Um, they and it was hugely controversial because, you know, for a number of reasons, but they did some interesting sort of traffic calming and some interesting things with actually with parking. Um, where they they converted the parking spaces similar to what has happened under COVID, but into sort of flexible space, quote unquote, that people, you know, some businesses could take over the parking of their building to that's that's just that's an aside. Yes, they did do that and they did have bike lanes.
Right.
Yeah.
With regard to the discussion earlier about encouraging offices, a a professional office, a doctor or a dentist, we have one dentist on the street now, or a lawyer, does not have walk-in traffic. They they have appointment traffic. And that's one car at a time, plus plus maybe some overlap. Uh, a a a generalized commercial office building where we go to work in the morning, that requires a great deal of parking. And that would seem to be an impossible goal in downtown Sterling is to have dozens of cars of full-time workers trying to find a place to park because there are no lots large enough uh, to to support an office building worth of parking. So we're probably limited to small-scale retail and professional offices unless anybody's got an alternative solution to that parking problem.
Well, Victor mentioned one. We looked at it before, right? Municipal parking.
Well, yes, and in fact, the town did try to create a municipal parking lot uh, between Railroad Avenue and the tracks uh, next to the on the side of the hotel. There's room for about 60 or 70 cars in that town-owned property. And they got turned down by DEP because there's there's enough wetland that we couldn't cut the trees and pave it. And so that idea came and went about three years ago.
We also looked on Union. Was it Union or just was it straight maybe the other side of Somerset? There's that. I think that's what Victor was talking about.
If it is not, it some of those, many of those streets do not go all the way through as they are mapped. And the reason they don't go all the way through is because they're wetland. Uh, to the east, you've got Somerset that doesn't go all the way through. Uh, Union is cut short. Add to the to the and Mercer is cut short and Morris is cut short. If you go to the west, Somerset goes through, Union does not. Uh, Essex does not.
We we talked about parking down there semi-permanible. So if it's a bit, then you don't park there, right? So township owners at the head, we talked about it being a head head point of any trails going into Central Park, et cetera. I don't recall what the reasons why the study, I can't recall the conclusion of the study. I'm sure we looked at that area. I don't remember if we couldn't do it or it's just not, I just don't remember the conclusion.
You could extend, you could extend Somerset Street next to Biagio. Uh, that on paper runs all the way to the big town-owned lots behind Valley. The difficulty with doing that is that you're talking about wetland, which means you've got, you've not only got to develop the street, you've got to develop parking and you've got to do something about the fact that those parking lots will flood. And that's why no, that's why Somerset Street a- actually hasn't been built out all the way to the end is because of the fact that it's wetland.
I think we should look at opportunities to expand municipal parking in downtown Sterling to accommodate potential A, Central Park traffic. B, just give some appeal in for the Stone Hotel, where we had to use the Stone train station, change the evening parking there. And this is probably a bit of a common theme up up the Valley Road as well.
Tom, your hand's up.
Yeah, why not also try to promote businesses to maybe combine lots to help create parking?
Yeah.
Well, I think that with with the 50-foot lot size, the 50-foot frontage, combining lots is about the only way you're going to get a critical mass to do development. Because of the setback rules, a 50-foot lot just doesn't give you very much building.
Right, maybe two businesses can buy a lot in between and split it and use it as parking that way. Or or if there's maybe something a town can buy back and put municipal parking in there because there's not nothing going into that space. Just trying to think of some creative ideas on how to create parking because that's going to be it's the way the way the township is so sprawled out, it's not a walkable town. There are walkable areas, but you still have to drive to the area in order to be able to walk.
If you were going to create parking for downtown Sterling, what you would probably do uh, is look to the west on the uh, on Somerset, Union and Essex, look to the west at those industrial buildings uh, which are all very successful businesses with presumably very low operating costs because they are so old. But if those industrial buildings were, there's an LI2 zone with about 11 lots in it uh, to the west of Maine. Now, one of the suggestions in the master plan is that those industrial buildings gradually evolve into part of the downtown business district so that instead of being linear along Main Avenue, it actually gains. it actually gains a second dimension to the west. If those if one or more of those buildings became a parking lot, uh this might solve some of what you're talking about. The question that I have raised is if that if those industrial buildings are redeveloped as part of the commercial district, is that a wise idea, given the fact that brick and mortar a commercial seems to be disappearing from the world? Would we rather have those industrial buildings on the west side of Maine? Or would we rather have empty storefronts?
I I think it's circular. You said we say right now brick and mortar is going away, but then who knows in twenty years, we could see a revolution of it coming back.
Not to be argumentative, but I was uh I was in Westfield recently at the Sweetwater Steakhouse and it looked pretty vibrant there.
Yeah.
But the toy shop on Valley Road closed because nobody buys toys in toy stores anymore. And look at the and look at the the storefronts, the retail storefronts in Valley Mall. Those that have been repurposed are being repurposed as service places, not as retail. For example, you've got the Verizon store and you've got the music school. And you've got a dance studio going in there. Those are all service businesses as opposed to uh brick and mortar retail.
I who cares what it is. As long as it gives opportunity for flexible um stage. We're not saying it has to be a toy shop. Right? It's things whatever this I think these functional form type things, but buildings, right? Yes, whatever it is.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, no, uh form-based. Yeah, I mean, I I think um what we're finding is the what what retail is thriving is the kind of retail that you can't purchase online. Which is, you know, something that's sort of more experiential, as we call it, experiential retail. And some of it's just like restaurants and things like that that, you know, yet you or or even just the types of uses that people go and uh you know, it's something that involve, you know, I this is a stupid one, but like, you know, you go and make a pot and paint your pot or whatever. It's it's some sort of thing that involves people actually having to leave their home and it's something that they would not be able to do or purchase online or experience online.
If you go back forty years on Main Avenue, uh there was a florist, there was a hardware store, there was an auto parts place.
Hmm.
Uh those those brick and mortar retail are all gone. Uh there the 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 only retail places now are uh the Gluten Free Bakery and the Dessert Ladies. Everybody else on Maine is a service.
Service with no parking.
Yes.
A tired looking business district.
Victor, did you have something?
No, I just said it. There there there's not a lot going on. But we're not really attracting business and people there. It's tired looking.
Yeah. Yeah.
Vision, Victor. What's our vision?
Beautiful lights, flower boxes, flower.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I know all that. That's that's cosmetics.
We've already gone through it. Unless anybody comes up with a different vision, my vision is suggestion is still what we started off with.
Yeah, I think David, it's a great start.
I agree.
We put all we put all the lights and sidewalks in in two thousand and eight for four blocks at the cost of three quarters of a million dollars. Uh and and that covered the existing B one five district plus another block down as far as uh Morris Street. But what's that done for us? Since two thousand and eight, it hasn't done anything in terms of incentivizing. I know that's not a word. In terms of incentivizing redevelopment.
I I understand what you're saying, but what would make you want to walk to our you you know what I mean? There's not a lot that's making you want to walk there right now, in my opinion.
Well, I think what's in the draft that uh David prepared, which are sorry, you know, presented was um what usually uh leads to vibrant walkable retail is more residence. And there there's a statement in this draft that says that. Um and you know, usually that's through multifamily housing.
I I think we're getting that in town too over the next ten years.
Right. Right.
Well, we're the zoning board is looking at fifteen units a block from the train station. And that that will probably become a reality because the two lots that they're talking about have been derelict, I'll use that word, derelict for at least twenty-five years.
Not not fifteen units. It's only four, five, six, seven, eight.
Yeah. This is
There's two floors, isn't there? There's nine and seven.
They're proposing they're proposing three floors. They're the the lower let the the ground level, they're before they're proposing two affordable units. Um that's what they need to use for variance for. Uh and then the second, the second story is four units. The third story is two two units.
And that's on a total of six tenths of an acre. Which is probably
Yeah, Liz could speak better to the size of the acreage for the two properties that are they're combining.
Yeah, hold on one.
Yeah, I I've I've got it right here. It's six tenths of an acre between the two properties. Now the 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 other issue is with the uh with the density of five per acre that the ordinance allows for residential in that zone, they're going to need a variance there too. Because there's less than an acre and they got more than five units. Do we want to? Do we want to? Do we want to propose changing the residential density uh in that zone?
In Stan Sterling Village?
Yeah.
Yes.
Obviously, I mean, obviously.
And now if if, for example,
We obviously got to look at ordinances and see what's hindering that type of vision. If there's something hindering it, we change it. Isn't that the point?
Well, the here's the point. If in fact, we like the notion of residence over commercial. And if in fact, we increase the residential density above five per acre, then you're talking about height issues. Now you're talking three and four-story buildings.
We suggested three stories, I think.
Plus the parking crunch that goes with all those additional apartments.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it becomes a squeeze.
It comes
So residential may not be an alternative either. I'm still grasping for what does work.
I'm I I I don't sure if I want to carry on. I mean, show them the circles because I'm getting tired, to be honest. I guess I guess it's six o'clock in the morning, South Point Field.
Yes.
The Yankees are on.
Yeah, so I mean, how do we? How do we bring this to? I think I think just about everybody's weighed in. I I really don't have any significant issues with what's been raised through the draft that's been presented to us on Sterling Village. Uh does anybody uh on the board really think that we're way off target? I think they should speak now.
I don't see I don't see a vision in that document, Don. I see a bunch of cosmetic. I see some lipstick. But and and the the whole historical thing is nice rhetoric, but what is the vision?
Dennis, we're not developers. We'll never be able to know what the market's going to hold. All we can do is facilitate what the market will where where the market will land.
I'll go back to the vision of trying to address the stormwater situation.
Yeah, well, that that's a more significant thing that the town can actually do.
Do that, I think that changes.
I I I think I think that's a game changer.
I totally agree.
There are going to be some instances where we can't do anything about it. Maybe we don't build there anymore um and so forth. And all that has to come into consideration. And we definitely need a professional to come in and look at that, whoever that professional might be, whether it's a store management company or it's the uh the engineers um uh the Army Corps of Engineers, somebody. And then it has to be done in partnership with our neighboring uh 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 communities because I do not want to push the problem onto them. It has to be done.
Oh, and and I think we could write in, it's really the Passaic River Coalition. I mean, we have, there's a coalition that's been formed that somewhat relates uh back to even the thirteen-town um uh band that was formed around the swamp. So I there there's relics of some of these things that that can look more holistically at the region and I I I support that, Tom, a hundred and fifty percent. That's exactly how you have to look at these things. And it's messy. You don't get everything you want, but at least you're being a good steward.
But we're like, yes, exactly. We're all coming to the table.
You if if I I
Hold on, Dennis. Hold on, Dennis. I think this small house wants.
Yeah, that that's that's all well and good with the floodwater, but I think we missed that boat about ten years ago. And I just don't think there's any will uh for anybody. You you talked about the Army Corps of Engineers. I I don't, they handed us a flood wall that would have alleviated a lot of the problems. And to try to get them to come back and do it again, it's it's going to be a fight.
The back in the late two thousands uh and prior to the early two thousand teens, the uh our congressman, who was chairman of the House Appropriations Committee, managed to put about eight million dollars into the budget of the Army Corps of Engineers to to build the flood wall uh along Valley Road that presumably would have stopped all this. And unfortunately, uh the Township Committee decided not to put up its share of the funding at the time. And you can read all about that in the mayor's recent interview with the newspaper. But I don't know if we are prepared to start that all over again. And clearly, we're not going to have a time, an easy time getting funding for that. Uh it took ten years to get the funding built up uh when we had a congressman who had a lot of weight in Washington. We don't have that now.
Guys, we're coming up with obstacles when defeating ourselves before we even try. We can't. First of all, first of all, I'm glad that wall wasn't built. That's antiquated thinking. And that shouldn't have ever been built. I mean, with regards to how you address flood, we've learned so much over the last decade in regards to how to mitigate floodwaters in a lot better, much more sustainable way uh than putting hard structures up and just channeling it downstream.
You see how
So now Chatham has a worse problem. Great.
Okay, I'll I will accept that as your professional judgment. What do we do next?
If I if I may say, as a Township Committee, we're always open to and looking for solutions for the flooding issue and the stormwater management issue we have here in town. So I wouldn't rule out a a possible solution. If there's one available, we're open to it.
Well, I hope I hope you're not looking for the master plan to tell you what that solution is. We're only going to, we're only at a point now of identifying it as an obstacle.
Think that the master plan can address, this is an issue that needs to be forefronted, anything that happens. I don't think that any we, we're not going to come up with the solution in the master. It's not appropriate for the master plan, but I think it's a goal and objective that maybe is guiding the 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 future of Sterling.
Yep. Yep.
And then I just and just what you said earlier, Liz, if that's becoming a mandatory part of MLU, we have to address it.
Yeah.
And just a minor note, when we did the introduction to Long Hill for this master plan, we included the relationship to other plans. We talked about Passaic River consideration. And the township is cognizant of how to manage these those challenges may impact other communities as well. So we we stated that this river by the fault flooding is a concern of the town and we have to address it. It's not a singular solution. And it's not a sturdy downtown.
No, absolutely. But I think it I learned a lot tonight as to what the concerns are. But I mean, that that being so significant, particularly in in this area.
And it's not just, and just a minor point, the streets to the side of that. My friends and I live down there and they have flooding as a lot of okay, but more than they ever had before. And they live in Sterling. But so even though it may not have looked as bad, I would argue downtown Sterling on Main, the surrounding houses were perhaps more negatively impacted this time than previously. So and that just whether that's clogging of the river or tributaries or whatever it may be, but to
That's the outcome.
Don's point a bit, it's not just a maybe a flood wall in one location, because where does it all go? It's in there. And we need to face it. All right.
Would anyone else like to summarize? Okay, then let's move to the next item on the agenda, which is uh committee reports. Uh we the uh the pre-application review committee did review a subdivision on Old Forge and uh left the developer with a couple of suggestions and maybe some simplification. And we'll probably see that come in sometime in the next three or four months, my guess. The only and we've talked about the RFP committees, the only other committee that's active right now is the uh Prism Committee.
No update. I've received some information from Alan, so thank you very much for that, Alan. Uh outside of that, no update.
Uh older new business. Don't all talk at once.
Well, you mentioned, I would just mention that as well, but that was oh, minor point, the um sorry, this is all maybe old business. The um the little um restaurants in Myersville opened soft opening the weekend.
Oh.
If you haven't had a chance to go in, we were probably one of the first customers. They did a tremendous job, really nicely, the decorations and it just felt like a little rustic and so if I may make a plug, stop by at some point and then and breakfast, lunch and dinner, breakfast and it's food that's very fresh and natural. So just sorry.
Any bike racks?
Don and I, Don and I were inside four years ago uh near the beginning of this odyssey, and it looked pretty nice inside then. The problem is what they had done, they had done without uh proper beer uh authority. So I'm assuming that there they got all their ducks in a row now.
Probably. And inside bathrooms, toilets as well. I mean, honestly, it looks they did a really, really good job. So I just encourage people to stop by at some point.
Was that property ever sold or was it just?
No, no, nope. Dom's widow still owns it.
Gotcha.
Okay. That's like a good.
Yeah, it's nice. I I see it as I go through Myersville. It's very nice. It's a nice, they did a nice job with the facade.
What time do they open in the morning, David?
I think it's eight o'clock, Dennis. I thought it was fairly reason early, reasonably early, right? I'm sure it's eight o'clock. Soft opening at eleven, but I think from this weekend or something, maybe I I don't know, but eight o'clock is what it's eight till ten, I think.
Thank you for that report. I think I'm going to give it a shot in the morning.
Oh, definitely, definitely. And if you say you're a board member, you may get a free cup of coffee.
If I tell him what?
It's over back.
You may get a free cup of coffee.
No, no, no. I think the Ethics Committee would have an issue with that. Let's
They're going to charge Dennis extra for blowing the lid off of their original plan.
Yeah.
Any other uh old or new business? Any other reports on stuff that we have uh decided as a board that's actually happening or not happening? All right then. Uh the next meeting is two weeks from tonight. And we would not expect to see um uh Parisi there and so we'll probably have to invent an agenda between now and then.
Oh, that's remember the two weeks from tonight, we decided we're going to do the, we're going to try to do the uh
Ah, yes, thank you very much.
The attorney interviews.
Thank you very much. That'll keep us busy. Would uh if we have a if we have a joint board meeting with the zoning board plus the attorney candidates, uh do you think that will work on Zoom?
Absolutely.
Any other, any other opinions? Because we will have the issue of, uh, it'll be an executive session, so we'll have to invite the uh, candidates in one at a time and schedule that and time that and the like.
I think they'll find it easier than traveling somewhere personally. I think they'd say, yeah, it's fine. But I'm, whichever way you, everyone's done fine either way. But quite for executive session, I don't mind.
I know that when we had the uh, uh, the uh, preliminary interviews with Warner and Company, I was not at that meeting and I think there were only four members of the planning board at that meeting. So we're going to have to work harder at getting a bigger turnout. That was a joint meeting with the zoning board on their date.
Well, if the board wishes, when I confirm the date with the zoning board, I can also poll the zoning board to see if they would like to do the meeting in person. We can do the meeting in person if everybody decides they'd like to do it that way.
How about a show of hands right now?
For what?
For, okay, uh, all those who would be willing to meet in person for the interviews with the attorney, raise your hand. Willing to meet in person.
Do we have to wear masks at the uh?
Yes.
Yes.
Then no.
All right, Tom, did you look, put your hand down?
Yeah, not, not if we have the mask option, then I'll pass.
Okay, I guess I'm in the minority then.
So it stays on Zoom?
Yeah, I guess. Okay, thank you very much all. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye, good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, everybody. We'll be in touch.
Go Yankees.